If you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card. Each person addressing the Board shall have three minutes to complete his or her comments on each agenda item for which he or she has filled out a card. The Chair has the discretion to determine or alter the time limits on any agenda item. The Board of County Commissioners requests that speakers appearing under the Public Comments section of the agenda limit their comments or presentations to matters relating to county business that are within the Board's control, authority, and jurisdiction.
Well, good morning and welcome to the Normal County Commission Meeting of September 17, 2024. I normally do not do this, but I am going to this morning. I'd like to recognize our former Speaker of the House, Steve Crisifulli. Steve's here today, and I can tell you from some of the people that have been in the legislature, that is a big deal, and it's an honor to have you here, Steve. So, thanks for coming out.
And also walking in the door is former State Representative Dixie Sansom. Dixie, wave at everybody if you would, please. It's nice to see you.
Okay, let's start off with the invocation by Justin Renner, Pastor Justin Renner, First Baptist Church of Merritt Island. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for your hand of blessing upon Brevard County. God, we thank you for the citizens and the people that you have moved to this place, God. We thank you for the businesses and the leaders and those sitting before us. God, we thank you for provision and just your hand of blessing that has been upon this place. God, we ask for wisdom this morning as items are discussed. God, we ask that you would give clarity for what is being asked and what is being discussed, Lord, and you would give wisdom. God, and I pray for peace and for your hand of protection upon Brevard County, Lord, over our schools and over our families. Lord, we just pray for protection and peace, and we thank you for what you're doing. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Let's have Commissioner Tobias lead us into pledge, please.
I am President and District Attorney of the United States of America and to the Republic for which I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay, let's start the meeting out with a motion, please, for the approval of the minutes of the July 23, 2024 regular meeting and the August 6, 2024 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve? It's a motion by Commissioner Goodson, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett in regards to approving the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. All right, let's start out with, I believe, Commissioner Felton. You're going to get our first resolution. Is that accurate, sir? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And today, we have Cinni Mitchell and from the Salvation Army. And I have a resolution. You can come up, I'll read the resolution. You can bring your group, you're welcome. I'm going to read the resolution, then we'll make a motion to pass it, and then the Chair will invite you to speak, and then we'll present you with the resolution, okay? Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to an abuser's systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control, and whereas more than one in four women have experienced rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in their lifetime, and nearly eight million U.S. women are raped, physically assaulted, and/or stalked by a current or former intimate partner each year, and nationwide, an average of three women are killed by a current or former intimate partner every day, and whereas, in just one day in 2023, across the United States and its territories, nearly 77,000 victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters, and whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society here in Brevard County, throughout the United States and the world, and whereas citizens of Brevard, government officials, law enforcement agencies, healthcare providers, domestic violence programs, social service providers, educators, clergy, and community leaders must join together to end the abuse and violence that continues to threaten the health, safety, and well-being of so many in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Together with the Brevard County Domestic Violence Task Force, we urge citizens to speak out against domestic violence, support survivors' efforts to live free from abuse, and hold those who abuse accountable. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 17th day of September 2024. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for approval.
There's a motion by Commissioner Felton, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Felton, and all the commissioners.
Pull that mic up just a little bit, if you would be so kind. I want to hear every word you're saying.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Felton. We appreciate that, and all of the commissioners for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. You know, it's a month that we focus as providers, professionals in the field, and invite the community to really shine a light on domestic violence because this affects everyone. We all know someone affected by domestic violence, someone in our lives, and the more that we can educate and put information out there, we can help survivors and avoid tragedies in our community right here in Brevard. I'm here with half of our Domestic Violence Task Force. They are the most amazing professionals. I can't say enough, I'm so proud to kind of be the informal leader right now, but we all have, you know, amazing depth of knowledge and professionalism and work really as a team in this community. And if anybody else would like to say something, you know, again, we thank you and thank you all for coming and you all recognizing.
Okay, I have a resolution, and we'll take a picture, okay?
Okay.
I think we got a crowd down there as it is. We wouldn't want to ruin all that beauty with my ugly face, anyway. We have another resolution coming up. Jeanette and Wayne Price, are you here? Why don't you come up and sit in the front here just for a second, if you would. Wayne, are you here? You're not coming up? Well, the price is right. Real quickly, let me make a comment because that resolution that just happened is an emotional resolution, and another one today is the one that I'm going to talk about, which is on suicide, and every one of our lives is affected by this. I don't, you know, not only with the abusive spouse situation, but almost on a daily basis, or at least a weekly or monthly basis, we know somebody that's committed suicide that didn't get help. So, the resolution is, whereas September is designated as National Suicide Prevention Month, as recognized by the National Association of Mental Health Illness, whereas National Suicide Prevention Month is at a time to raise awareness and shift public perception of this often stigmatized topic while spreading hope and sharing vital information to people affected by suicide, and whereas many health officials and community leaders realize that mental health, mental illness, and suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, background, or gender, and understand that more open and honest discussion about mental health is required to address the issue, and whereas although National Suicide Prevention Month provides a dedicated time for communities to come together and address this difficult topic, it is important to discuss suicide prevention year-round because just one conversation can in fact save a life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of September National Suicide Prevention Month, and encourages those with mental health issues to seek the help of family members, friends, colleagues, and/or licensed mental health professionals to assist them at times of need. I move that we accept the resolution. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Jeanette, please.
Chairman Steele, Commissioners and staff, thank you and good morning. I'm Jeanette Ginling. I'm the President and CEO of Space Coast Health Foundation. I'm here with representatives of 2-on-1 Brevard, Palm Point Behavioral, and a new not-for-profit called Do It For Hunter. We have spent the last seven weeks gathering proclamations supporting suicide awareness and prevention from the cities in Brevard as well as Brevard School Board. We also have the enthusiastic support of our four chambers. The partnerships and collaborations in getting these proclamations and support show what we can do working together as a community. Suicide is horrible, but I believe our community efforts to talk about mental health and the stigma associated with it are making a difference. In 2022, the latest data that we have from the Department of Health, there were 115 suicides on the Space Coast. That was the lowest number since 2014, which was 114 suicides. Obviously, one suicide is too many, but it looks like we're trending in the right direction, and I credit you and the other community leaders for being forthright in addressing this serious issue and noting that mental health is a key component to overall health. Proclamations like this one you issued this morning show that you care. It shows that the Space Coast cares, and that's an enduring message you should be proud of. Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you, Jeanette. We have a resolution.
I'd like a comment.
I think Commissioner Goodson wants to say something.
Okay, Commissioner Goodson.
Thank you, sir. September 21, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. is You Matter Day at Merritt Island High School. Kelly is one of my constituents, and she's running that, so please attend if you can. That's at Merritt Island High School, September 21, 10 to 2. Thank you.
Okay. We have a resolution acknowledging Early Learning Coalition?
Yes, so we have Lori Gambino and Darby Miller from Early Learning Coalition of Brevard. Okay. You're, okay. You're welcome to come up, and then I'll read the resolution, and then we'll pass it, and then you'll be invited to speak. My wife is a Dolly Parton fan, so she'll, maybe she'll be wa-
A good start.
Maybe she'll be watching this today and appreciate that I'm reading this. Okay, so, for the Early Learning Coalition of Brevard and the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, whereas the Early Learning Coalition of Brevard believes that children of Brevard County are our greatest and most important resource, and their earliest experiences set the stage for their future success in school and in life, and whereas the Early Learning Coalition of Brevard County strives to make certain that children and families have access to quality, affordable, early learning programs and services necessary to better ensure their successful futures, and whereas the Early Learning Coalition of Brevard County currently serves between 8,000 and 9,000 children each year in the school readiness programs, and whereas the Early Learning Coalition of Brevard County has partnered with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library in its early childhood book gifting program to provide a high-quality free book each month to children from birth to age five, since 1995, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library has become the premier early childhood book gifting program in the world, and whereas the Early Learning Coalition of Brevard and Dolly Parton Imagination Library will bring books into the homes of over 15,000 Brevard children, and studies conducted by the Dollywood Foundation show important increases in kindergarten readiness scores for children participating in the program over their peers who do not, aligning perfectly with the mission and values of the Early Learning Coalition of Brevard. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby unanimously recognize the achievements and outstanding accomplishments of the Early Learning Coalition of Brevard, and offers them congratulations on their significant contributions with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library and sincere wishes for continued success. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 17th day of September 2024. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for approval.
Commissioner Felton moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Goodson. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Thank you. If I could ask our Board Chair and our Board Chair, Alan Bergman, and our Community Outreach Coordinator, Darby Miller, thank you, first of all, all of you for having us here, and we appreciate the support as well with the resolution. Couple of quick notes, just wanted to make sure everybody understands, 85% of a child's development and success in school is developed before the age of five, their social, their intellectual, as well as all their personality. Our partnership with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library is actually bringing books into homes. Of the data, the research that we pulled, we have almost 20,000 children in the county from birth to five years old, and our maximum level of support can go up to 17,000. So, we are super excited about this partnership. It's helping children at their most critical time, and it's helping our families engage in literacy, family engagement, and also helping our parents be the best teacher they can as a child's first teacher. So, we thank you for this opportunity, and Board Chair, I'm not sure if you wanted to say a word, Alan?
Sure, why not?
Come on over, Alan. It's our Board Chair, Alan Bergman.
Thank you. I'm never at a shortage for words. I appreciate you giving us recognition at this event and realizing the value we have to the children of our community and the rest of the country, really. There is a strong network developing and realization that the children of our world need to be educated to deal with the technology and growth of our society. As it stands, technology is growing faster than we even expected it to, and we need people to fulfill those job slots as time passes on. By preparing these children really early in life about the simple things like numbers, reading, they are ready to take the first step into the world of academia, which is going to be very demanding, and they're going to need to fulfill those positions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I'll also mention, we are doing a ribbon-cutting event today at 5:00 at our Melbourne office, so if any of you are in the area, please welcome you to stop by and say hi. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the agenda with the consent agenda, and I believe there is, I know there's a card on F1, and then we're also pulling F4. Is there anybody else that has anything to pull on the consent agenda? Commissioner Tobias informed me that he is going to vote no on F17 without comment, so let the record reflect that Commissioner Tobias is voting no on F17. All right, Chuck.
Mr. Steele, Chuck Sheridan, Merritt Island. We've given a lot of money, a half-cent sales tax to the Indian River Lagoon Project, and I'm all in favor, I'm catching fish now in my backyard, but we've got a resource that we've not explored. When the property was acquired in the 60s by eminent domain, the eminent domain law, federal law states that it shall only be used for federal purposes. We've got a lot of private sector businesses at the Space Center right now, and 1974, Gerald Ford, when he created Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge, HH 855, stated that when the property, when NASA no longer had a mission, it would, property that the county donated and Titusville donated, would go back to the county, and it should, it could only be used for national, for other governmental agencies that are non-military, and should NASA ever lease facilities to the private sector, that they need to be subject to same taxes as a landslide, offsite, so as not to create an unfair advantage. State Law 196, 199, 2B says that, my eyes, no new cataract, it bothers me, says that private businesses shall be taxed only as a tangible property tax on, if it's a rental prop, if rentals are due. If no rentals are due, the leaseholds shall be subject to tax, the sale, property tax and sales tax. Bank of America owns a $278 million facility out there that they leased to Blue Origin that's on federal land, zoned agricultural. They paid $7,000 in school taxes last year. That's it. We would solve a lot of our property taxes and River Lagoon taxes if we were to pursue that. I mean, we've got the facilities, they're not going to go away. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to make sure you were, I mean, was that just public comment? Is that what you were doing? Because F1 has nothing to do with anything that you just said.
Well, it had to do with a grant, didn't it?
No, it really has to do with a pilot program that we're trying to establish to involve HOAs, but that's perfectly-
I apologize.
Don't worry about it. You have a right to say whatever you'd like to say. Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, Jesse.
I appreciate it. Commissioner Tobias on F4, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just to be clear, I'm fully in support of F4. This just expands it a little bit more, and this is permission to advertise, so again, we can't do this after the fact. So, the motion I would have would be to move to adopt legislative intent and permission to advertise as outlined in the agenda report, with the additional direction to make the necessary changes to align the voting membership of the Board with the minimum requirements found in Florida Statute 163.3174 and relevant interlocal agreements.
Okay. Are you making a motion to do that, sir?
That would be the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? All right, it's been seconded by both Commissioner Pritchett and Commissioner Goodson. Is there discussion in regards to that? Morris, do you have anything to say in regards to that? Are we okay with this?
No, sir, I understand the motion, and we can definitely accomplish that with the ordinance.
Okay, cool. All right, great. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. May I have a motion, please, to accept the rest of the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Commissioner- Commissioner Pritchett moves to accept the consent agenda with the exception of the change in F4, uh, which Commissioners Tobias just gave to the Clerk's Office. It's been seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, uh, let's move on, please, if we could. To, I believe, uh, we're going to public hearings.
We have one.
We have a, okay, uh, public comment card. Let's go to public comments real fast before we get into public hearings. Uh, Reverend Dennis, I think you have a public comment, sir, that you'd like to put forth today?
Yes, sir. Good morning, my name is Reverend Johnny Dennis. I'm the president of the National Action Network here in Cocoa, Florida. I'm also the chaplain at Met Department of Mission there at Baptist Church. I'm here to talk about HB 1365. Let the record show that I serve each one of you a copy of a petition, and also I'm gonna call it agreements. For my birthday back in May, I took the Brightline train to Fort Lauderdale. When I got to Fort Lauderdale, on one side it was the city bus terminal, on the other side of the Brightline station, were in the middle for miles homeless camps. And I said to myself, I pray to God that the city of Cocoa and the county of Brevard does not get to this situation. But we have a crisis, a homeless crisis in Brevard County, and it's not being addressed. Since March, I have been advocating for the homeless shelter and a homeless tent city at the city of Cocoa. And we have come up with, well, the mayor endorses BCI as being next county-rented operated homeless shelter. But I have been pushing for a tent city. And if the tent city is approved, uh, my organization, National Action Network, we are presently supplying pallets for floors under tents, we'll supply a garbage bag free for the next six months. But the city of Cocoa, I had a meeting with the city manager last week, and he gave me a copy of the draft, which I've been aware of, uh, HB 1365 since it was passed into law. And I personally think it's ungodly, and it's an inhumane law. But on the other hand, it shows America what our leaders have been ignoring, the homeless crisis. It needs to be addressed before it gets out of hand. And, uh, it makes us safer to have homeless shelters. Now, I know for a fact that everybody's not gonna attend them. But the jail is overcrowded because of lathering, trespassing, and, uh, prowling, which jails should not be for a homeless person. Uh, we should have tent cities here in Cocoa and the county and a shelter. So, the petition I file means that the city cannot run off on their own and set up anything. We've been talking since March on potential sites. But we need the approval of this county board to get something going, and DCF's approval. So as you'll see, I did submit a copy, let the record show that we need help in getting something for the homeless. We got, we got to address this, this, uh, issue. I've heard a lot of, uh, excuses from the city, uh, where the money's gonna come from. I said, "Well, you didn't have no problem coming up with $5 million to give Brightline, or you didn't have an issue coming up with $20,000 to put vegetation in three fish ponds, so get a grant." You know? There's always a way to come up with money, even if we have to go to a half-cent tax to get something going for the homeless. But this is an inhumane issue, and, uh, we got two more weeks before it goes into effect, and in January fines gonna start flying. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate your comments. Um, let's go to H1.
Make a motion to approve.
You, you wanna make a motion to approve, or?
I second it.
All right, well, so far, your comments are really good because you've got a motion to approve already. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion on H1? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Great job, Mark. Keep it up, buddy. All right, H2, who is handling this one?
Make a motion to approve.
BB, Budget Buddy, Jill, okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pritchett to approve, and a seconded by Commissioner Goodson. Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right.
All right, going to new business. J1.
There you go.
All right, um, now, let me just, before we get into these cards on the, the lighthouse, and I've, I've done this once before, and I'm gonna do it again, just to potentially save everybody a lot of heartburn, uh, I would like to poll the Board on where they are on this. Commissioner Tobias, where are you on this issue?
Uh, I'm gonna be supporting your decision at the TDC, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
I really need to hear some discussion.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure. All right.
I'm, I'm undecided.
Okay, you're undecided. So that means that we'll go ahead with the, the cards that are here. Uh, so let me call up, uh, Ron Ecker. Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning. My name's Ron Ecker, I'm president of Cape Canaveral Lighthouse Foundation. Foundation was founded in 2002 to help the Air Force run the lighthouse. Right now, we have over 600 members, plus another 150 active volunteers. Our goal as a foundation was to rebuild the footprint of the light station. Right now, in 2018, we got, uh, $500,000 from the commission, and we built Phase 1, which was the head lighthouse keeper's cottage and the restrooms, storage facility. We're back this year to seek another 2, uh, 775,000 to complete two more cottages, which would be a his, educational college, and then a replicate college. And which, we think it's important that we do this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, if you could pull that mic up just a little bit, that would be helpful. Thank you. I know you're a little tall, but that's great. I appreciate it, sir.
Common problem.
All right.
My name's Jamie Draper, I'm the director of the Cape Canaveral Space Force Museum. Uh, the Cape Canaveral Space Force Station boasts 74 years of launch activity from Florida's space coast. A fledgling country only decades old built a brick lighthouse in 1848 to warn passing seafarers of dangerous shoals off Cape Canaveral. The iron lighthouse that stands today replaced it in 1868. The Cape Canaveral Lighthouse connects visitors to three separate centuries of American history. In seeking a site for a new missile testing location, the US government saw a federal foothold on the Cape due to the existence and operation of the Cape Canaveral Lighthouse. The historical significance of the Cape Canaveral Lighthouse is unmatched. It stands as part of the DNA of the Cape Canaveral Space Force Station. The lighthouse has witnessed over 8,000 launches from Florida's space coast. Werner von Braun himself would watch early launches from the top of the lighthouse. The Lighthouse Foundation introduces thousands of visitors each year to the rich history of the Cape. To see not only the lighthouse, but to experience and learn about the history of the US space program. Space Launch Delta 45, or SLD 45, their primary mission is assured access to space. It also assures access to its rich history, which extends from the Stone Age to the Space Age. The Cape Canaveral Lighthouse Foundation formed in 2002 and joined the active heritage programs of the Cape. Today, they operate as an essential element for the preservation and dissemination of Cape history. SLD 45 supports their outreach initiatives and is committed to continuing to allow access to Cape visitors from throughout the country. With agreements in place, that support will extend to many generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Rocky Johnson.
I expect the Rocky music to start at any sound. Dun, duh, dun, 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 duh, duh.
Well, it's hard to follow.
Go get it, Rocky.
Hard to follow the jolly green giant there in Jamie. Chairman Steele, Commissioners' staff, uh, as, uh, as Jason said, I'm Rocky Johnson. I'm a past president of, uh, Cape Canaveral Lighthouse Foundation. And, uh, I, I wanna underscore what, uh, our president, current president, Ron Ecker, said regarding the importance of the lighthouse and sharing that vision with not only Brevard County, the state of Florida, and with our nation. I wanna thank you all for, uh, funding the, uh, the first phase, which was wildly successful beyond anything we could have hoped for. We, we went from about one tour a month to multiple tours daily, an education program that we have Brevard County children, uh, from the 4th grade coming out and visiting, uh, the lighthouse, uh, and, and the museum there. The heads in beds analysis, Commissioner Tobias referred to the, um, TDC Committee and the full TDC vote. Uh, the, the heads in beds and the TDC analysis of our program, uh, certainly indicated the, that it's warranted. But most importantly, as an active member of the Lighthouse Foundation, I'm here to ask you as Commissioners to make the decision today to complete the second two cottages, to complete the footprint. I'm asking you to choose the preservation of our history. I'm asking you to pres, to choose the preservation of our story here in Brevard County. The story of how mankind's maritime navigation morphed into aerospace and celestial navigation. There are so many people who want to see a lighthouse in this country. There are so many people that wanna see the aerospace, the birth of aerospace in our country. And man, there are a lot of them that wanna see the place where those two things come together, which is right here in Brevard County. The history of Brevard County, the history of Port Canaveral, the history of the, the Space Center. I, I wanna emphasize what Jamie Draper said. Sir, if you'd just please direct everything to up here, please. Thank you. I wanna emphasize what Jamie Draper said. We have the full support of SLD 45, and that's been a wonderful partnership and, uh, an ability, they've given us the ability to share this vision, this rich history, to build on our past and to bless the future with the understanding of the past, and to use that tool of the lighthouse to show mankind what Florida is all about and America's rich history and the space industry through the lighthouse. For voting yes on this measure today, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you. Thank you very much. I, you know, I apologize, before I move on with the cards, Peter, why don't you, I, I apologize for skipping over your comments, but why don't you briefly give the, your comments in regards to what happened at TDC to the Board?
Sure.
And, and, and move forward, if you would.
Yes, sir. Uh, good morning. Um, the TDC recommended 5 to 3 to bring a capital facilities grant to the Space Coast, or the, uh, Cape Canaveral Lighthouse Foundation for $775,000.
Okay, thank you. Leslie Brown, please, you're up.
I wave with the support of the lighthouse.
Okay. We like those comments. Jenny Davis.
Hi. In addition, wave my time.
Thank you very much. Okay, Becky.
I wave in support of the lighthouse.
Thank you very much. Christine Eckler.
I wave in support of the lighthouse.
Thank you very much. Norm?
I'm here in support of the Lighthouse Foundation. I wave my time.
Well, whoever tutored you folks tutored you well. Right, it might be the guy in the back of the room. Well, we won't do that. Mark, are you, uh, here?
Yes.
You waving in support?
Yes.
All right, anybody else that has a card up here, are they waving in support? Okay. Is there anybody that would like to speak that's not waving in support? Because we can get to the discussion and see what's gonna happen with this, uh, that. So, uh, let's, uh, open the Board up for discussion in regards to, did, was there, did you?
Do you wanna read their names?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Heather Wingkop waves in support. Cheryl Bennett waves in support. Janet Abt waves in support. Adrian Smith waves in support. Virginia Blatz waves in support. Todd McDowell waves in support. Former State Representative Dixie Sansom waves in report. Marion Smith waves in support. Thomas Lindstrand waves in support. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, the, the floor is open for discussion. Commissioner Pritchett, do you have something?
I was kinda hoping you had a few.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yeah, I was waiting to see how I had to comment.
There you go. It's, it's your district, sir, let's, let's, uh-
The lighthouse is in my district, and so therefore, I would like to think the Commission would support it. It's been in existence since the mid-1800s, you heard all the good things. You heard all the stuff that's very important, that we keep our history close to us, so I'd like to see the Commission support this. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Goodson, let me ask you a quick question. Um, last time we gave him $500,000. So, do you know the total, I, I don't wanna put you on the spot, the total cost of this, is it the whole total cost, $775,000?
Peter, you wanna answer that?
Uh, $775,000 is what they requested. I'm not exactly sure what the total cost of that project was, uh, maybe somebody from the lighthouse could answer that question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
The $500,000 we received, uh, here, and the $250,000 we received from the state completed, uh, the first half of the project, which was the head keeper's cottage and the second cottage. This, this time, we're looking to complete, uh, Phase 2 of the project, which would complete the footprint of the original keeper's, uh, footprint there, so that when people come and visit, they see the lighthouse footprint as it was at the, you know, at the time that it was, uh, at its peak. So this is an additional, uh, $775,000 to complete the vision that we had at the begin, you know, at the beginning. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Pritchett, do you have any other comments?
Yeah, uh, real quick. So Commissioner Goodson, this is in your district, and I know you're doing a great job of watching over projects, and I'm hearing you feel pretty committed to this one, correct?
Yes.
Um, the only thing that I would request then, sir, is I, I think, um, that we should change the groundbreaking from three years to either two or one years, 'cause we've done that in the past with other projects. So that if this doesn't, um, be able to come into fruition, then you all are able to use the money later, and we're not tied into a contract.
Uh, question to you, Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir.
Did we do the same for your, um, million dollars a year for five, five years in Titusville?
I think we made it one year. Is that correct? When do they have to do groundbreaking?
Actually, I don't recall, I don't recall how, what the, what the groundbreaking was, but they had already broken ground, so it really didn't matter.
Yeah. I just think three years might be a little long. Can you negotiate that? So, you can always do extensions later as a Commission, but this way you're not tied up contractually.
Well, what benefit would it give us as a county to do that? Help me out, okay?
Well, let's say that they, they don't look like they're gonna be able to do this, and you guys need to use the funds for, like, say, lifeguards or something, then perhaps you've got the ability to, to move it at that time. I just know getting tied in for three years, if there's no progress, might be a little long.
I still don't quite, okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
I still don't quite understand, what is the difference between them and your police grant? What would be the, what?
We didn't do three years, I guess.
You didn't do three years, you did a year grant at a million a year for five years, correct?
I, I think they had to do a groundbreaking and showed potential that they were moving. I don't think we did it for-
Well, wouldn't they show potential groundbreaking by already putting 500,000 or 600,000 into, into Phase?
Yeah, that's just, it's just saying that they must do groundbreaking within three years, so I, I just, I'm just thinking it might be a little-
Let me ask you this, and thank you.
But, sir, what you can do later as a Commission, if you wanna extend them, you can.
Yep.
But this kinda gives you a little bit of more, uh, ability later, if you've got an issue.
When would you, may I, may I?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
When do you expect groundbreaking if you get this grant from TDC?
We would expect to break ground within a year.
And Chair, may I?
Yes, sir, absolutely. The floor's open for you.
Would you tell me, would you tell me then, if you were to get this grant, groundbreaking within a year, how long will it take you to complete? year, how long will it take you to complete the restoration of the $775,000?
It would take approximately a year, rounding it off.
Okay. Do you have a problem with what Commissioner Pritchett is?
No, we do not.
Okay. I have no problem with anything.
Yeah, and added to that, Commissioner Goodson, I think Commissioner Pritchett's right on the number. This is just a accounting mechanism that.
Yeah, I got you.
Additional funds become available.
I just want to see it move forward, because if you start talking about my age and years, it might not be long.
I got it. All right, Commissioner Tobia, I believe your light's on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm going to highlight some things that Peter went over real quickly, but a little more detail. I'll start with your comments here. I thought they were excellent. I listened to the TDC. You pointed out that being located on the Space Force Base will significantly limit the number of days tours can be conducted due to the increased number of launches expected next year, something that I hadn't thought of and I think is going to greatly impact. We'll get there in a minute here. And I appreciate everyone showing up. What you didn't hear was any of the numbers and how many room nights it would be created, how many visitors. I'm going to get to that, because that's in the study. I'd also like to go to Tom Hermanson, who has a vested stake, obviously, in this. He also voted no on this one. He raised concerns about the lighthouse being on property with restricted access. The limitations on who can go on the base and when is a significant timing factor on tourism and projecting total amounts. Let me tell you some other numbers here, and I think numbers are really important. It's wonderful to hand out money, but I think we need to look at, and since, and I appreciate everyone waving, you know, the time, but I can't wave these numbers. So we look at the IRS 990. We would see, if you looked at the IRS 990, the last two, you would see that total revenue is actually going down by this lighthouse. That's a reflection of one of two things, either visitors going down or community support going down. So that's obviously not very good. Also not mentioned by Peter here is this did not meet the minimum threshold to make it to us. They had to vote. It did not make the 75 points, so there had to be a special vote to send it up here. What also is not mentioned, the governor, this was in the state budget, the governor line item vetoed that, so the governor's office said this probably wasn't a worthy project. I spent some time with the economic impact study, and it's important to understand the economic impact study is given by the lighthouse. So these are the best numbers that you're ever going to get, because it says right in here that all the numbers of attendance were provided by the lighthouse. So again, these are the best. And I want to put that with what was said at the meeting. Becky Zingarrelli said that these two lighthouse cottages would add 25 minutes of time to visitors, so they'd spend, whatever, an extra 25 minutes. I find that very difficult, one hour and 15 minutes, one hour and 40 minutes. I find that very difficult to justify when attendance is going down, right? It would create an extra 1,460 room nights. So I don't know how an extra 25 minutes at the lighthouse is going to translate into 1,460 room nights. But let's assume that's correct. I don't think that is correct, but let's take that as correct. 1,460 room nights for an expenditure of $775,000 is wacky nu nu. This is, this does not make any sense compared to any of the other capital projects we've had. Commissioner Goodson, you mentioned, what's the difference between this and the police? There are some substantial differences. I had as many problems with the economic impact study of the Police Hall of Fame, but at least they showed they would create tens of thousands of room nights. This was 1,460, so less than one tenth. On top of that, the Police Hall of Fame was getting dollars from the outside, as we heard here. 100% of this second funding would be coming from the TDC and a bulk of the first set. So we would be funding, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 75% of this total project. I don't know that that's the wisest economic decision. There's other ones here. When we look at attendance, attendance of this is by their own report. It's by people that are above the age of 70 or 60 here. If we look at the young folks, it's like 3% or 4% of people under the age of 40 or 30 going to this. So it's fair to predict that attendance is going down and is continue to go down. If there really was support for this, we would see some sort of buy-in from the community, some sort of grant. We would have seen the governor's office say that this is a worthy project, we're willing to support some of this. So again, there is not one good reason that I can justify voting in support of this. On top of, our capital facilities budget sits at about $1.8 million. This would decimate it down to less than a million bucks moving forward. I don't think that's fair to the Commission to spend, or future Commissions, to spend almost half of it on a project that, at best case scenario, at best case scenario, for that extra 25 minutes, is going to create 1,460 room nights. So those are the numbers. I understand the feeling is great. I understand why they didn't talk about the numbers, because they're just not sparkling and they're just not worthy of this $775,000. It may be fair to offer them, Mr. Chair, the opportunity to respond to some of those numbers, but they're right out of the economic impact study that they supported. Again, I appreciate your time. I understand it's in your district, and that's why I spent so much time looking over, not only listening to what the TDC had to say, but going over the economic impact study.
Okay, Chair. Let me, since I voted no at the TDC in regards to this particular issue, and I was a firm no. I basically, and I think everybody there that was there that day, I said to you very candidly, I didn't like the limited access. I didn't like this, I didn't like that. And basically, I was told, it doesn't matter what you say when you come here today, because I'm voting no. Well, I'm eating my words, and I'm telling you why I'm eating my words. Because once I got into many of the people that have been involved at the Space Center, and because of all of the things that happened at the lighthouse, and I did, you know, I did find out how you get access, and I did start digging in to the potential for something that I think is probably one of the most important things in Brevard County's history and the United States' history, is the launches that went there and the people that went to the lighthouses. And I took a long time before coming to this decision this morning. I talked to a lot of people, and candidly, you know, our normal protocol is, is that if the Commissioner from the district wants it, they normally know what's best for the district. And I know Commissioner Goodson's really would like to have this project done, and I think, I think not only that, but I think it's in the best interest of the county and people all over the United, all over the world. And let me share with you, I get a chance to travel, and I see a lot of people with NASA hats on, and the first thing they want to do is they want to go to the Space Center. And once I started finding out what was going to be taught and what was going to be told in regards to the story of the Space Center, I thought $775,000 was a lot of money, and then I thought, well, you know what? If this is lost, we're going to lose the history of the Space Center, and I think it's a potential that I don't want to lose for people that's out there. So I'm a yes vote today, and hopefully, if the Commission needs to do whatever they need to do with this. But Commissioner Felton, do you have any comments that you'd like to?
No, I have.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think it's a little unfair to call the governor's name out, because if you know anything about the budget, last year, he killed everything, not just this one. He went through it like Artella the Hun. And that being said, also, as a board, we just approved, if you want to talk about heads and beds and all that, I hear you, and I, you know, I'm not sure, but we have a certain amount of duty to save our history, and that means saving this lighthouse. It's no more special than Gettysburg or anywhere else. I don't know how many people could come. John, you've got it down there, so I understand that. But we also appropriated, what was it, Peter, $300,000 to Palm Bay for a walk for policemen? How much did we put there?
Two hundred fifty thousand, sir.
Okay. And how many people are going to go down there and stay?
I vote, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead. The floor is open for discussion.
Yeah, I voted, just to be clear, I voted against that. But on fairness, we're not talking about saving the lighthouse here. Let me, you're trying to widen the scope. No one's talking about destroying this lighthouse. We're talking about adding a third and a fourth cottage to the lighthouse. No one is talking about destroying a lighthouse. No one's talking about destroying history.
That's in generality.
We're talking about creating more houses than, you know, we gave them $500,000 in period-correct furniture, okay? So this board has made some, listen, I know the votes aren't here, but I just want to be, I just want to go on the record, I'm not for destroying the lighthouse. I'm just not for giving them another 100% to go out and build more cottages for something that people aren't visiting in the first place.
When I speak of lighthouse, I speak of lighthouse and cottages as a umbrella over all of it. So I understand. All right, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Pritchett, do you have additional comments?
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Goodson, I know when we get up here, we've learned how to do this as a Commission. We have collateral that we have with each of our districts, and that's what we do, and we pay attention to make sure you don't have a crazy Commissioner that's going to do something totally off the wall. So, sir, on that, I'm giving you the respect of those funds. I do think they're a lot of money without them coming in, but of respect for you, sir, I'm good with that. But I do want to remind you, because you brought up the other Police Hall of Fame, but I also voted to give you the veterans, and I also voted to give you back the cultural funds. So it's not like I don't play with you here some, so that's the last time I'm going to let you throw the Police Hall of Fame in my face, sir. That's all I'm saying with that.
Well, please, please understand, being old, I forget a lot of good.
Well, I know that. You're from the state, and I'm not used to fighting like the state does, so. I'm pretty honest, I'll tell you what I'm thinking all the time.
Oh, yeah.
But on the, so just on the year timing, I'd feel better, since he said he could do it in a year. If we make it at 1.5 years and complete it within five years, I think I could get comfort then. Okay.
Commissioner Felton, do you have any comments or?
I was wondering if the staff light was on.
Peter, do you want to make some comments?
No. No, sir.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval, Chair, sir.
A motion to approve.
With the changes in the time period, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
With all the changes that Commissioner Pritchett.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Goodson to approve the item with the changes in the time period. Is there a second?
Second, sir.
There's a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries three to two. All right, let's go to the next one, which is, Peter, you're up on H2.
Yes, sir. J2 is cultural and sports grants. There are a couple of options here. One option is to accept the grants guidelines as defined and supported by the TDC back in March. The other option, sorry, for $600,000, up to $600,000 for the cultural and up to $240,000 for sports. Option two is the same amounts, but it's bringing a marketing support program, which was something we had talked about last year, where the funds would be used for marketing purposes to help these events. Or option three would be at the board's pleasure.
Now, this has all the guidelines in it for?
Yes, sir. It's got all the guidelines, applications, all of the backup information is in the package.
And that's part of the package that I read?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion from the board? Commissioner Tobia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to be, just to be clear, I'm not asking for any cuts or anything of that nature. I do like the marketing support idea, and I appreciate Peter working so diligently with me to come up and set the guidelines for that, as well as bringing that to the TDC, who it was met with, it was met with support, as is indicated in the agenda report. Couple things on that. It combines sports grants and cultural grants program into one, reduces staff time, reduces the number of TDC subcommittees potentially, and simplifies the process of reviewing and approving applications. Program involves the county providing marketing at the value of the award amount, as opposed to each recipient marketing individually and submitting for reimbursement. That's very important. We, it takes time for Peter to go out there and verify that marketing was actually spent correctly. I spoke with someone that came for one of these grants recently, the Surfing Santas, and he had mentioned that the Surfing Santas had used the marketing by the TDC, and they had done a much better job than he or anyone had the opportunity. Their reach had been greater. So whatever Peter, whoever Peter is contracting out is doing a very darn good job. So I think that that is another good indication that these support grants are effective and reduce the amount of funds that would be needed to administer it. So again, this is not a cut. This is a reduction, potential reduction in the subcommittees, as well as a reduction in staff time for verifying the reimbursement. So the motion would be to move the board direct staff to implement option two, the TDO marketing support program at funding levels presented, which would be the 840 with 240 from the marketing fund and 600 from the cultural fund. That would be, that would be the motion.
Question.
Commissioner Goodson.
Question. Peter, how much marketing funds or percentage would come out of, say, 240 of sports? How much would come out of that?
Depending on the number of applicants, we possibly would use all of the 240 for sports events, but this year, we used about $200,000, so it's possible that it'd be a little lower than that.
And how much of the 200, all of the 200,000 went to marketing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how about the, how much would come out of the 840? I mean, the 600?
The 600, we're estimating about $400,000 would be used of that.
All right, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I want to make sure that this motion doesn't affect the guidelines in any way. So, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pritchett, go ahead.
No, I'm with you on that. Are we approving the guidelines today?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I do have a couple of suggestions, Commissioner, if I may.
Oh, absolutely.
On the eligibility, we have, we changed whether or not any longer headquartered in Brevard County, but I would like to, if we could, put a preference goes to local organizations, and if there's others left, that we can go to outside of Brevard County, just so we don't exclude local organizations. Everybody got that? And then, as far as changing the availability of funds, I think that needs to be a little bit more discussion, because we changed it so that smaller crowds are getting larger amounts, but I think that needs to be discussed a little bit more, the availability, because when we changed that last time, there was a lot of discussion of why we were changing it. And then my only other one was, when we get to the sport grants, I think we should go back to keeping six and seven, because I think this should always come before the Brevard County Commission and not just authorized at the TDC level. So six and seven, I believe, should go back to how it was originally stated, so that all of the items after they're done comes to the VOCC for final approval.
So these aren't material changes, really, to the?
It's just housekeeping.
To the guidelines. Right, housekeeping stuff.
Yeah. Because I don't think we meant for not to come back to this board.
Right, I got it. Commissioner Felton, you have something you'd like to say, add to this?
I'm looking to see if his motion is going to be amended, so.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and talk about the motion, because it's not been seconded yet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to confirm with Peter, so we're all on the same page. The motion I have here does not affect the guidelines. I mean, before we get to the changes, it has no impact on the guidelines themselves. Is that fair?
No, sir. You selected option two, and the guidelines are part of option two, so.
Okay, and I forgot to mention, and Peter pointed.
Okay, and I forgot to mention, and Peter pointed this out, for the sports events, instead of marketing, they could use it on the fields?
They could get reimbursed for fields operated by Brevard County, yes, sir.
So, that would give them a little more flexibility there. But anyway, so I just want to be clear as we discuss this, mine has nothing to do with any of the changes here or the funding.
Can I clarify?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Mr. Cranis, did you just say option two does include the guidelines?
Yes, ma'am, it includes a set of guidelines and we would make sure that the changes that you suggested would be incorporated into those as well.
Okay.
All right, so who's going to word how the motion's going to be put forth? You want to try it, Commissioner Tobias?
Sure, I'm going to do it generically, though. I move that the board direct staff to implement option two, the TDO marketing support program with the three changes suggested by Commissioner Pritchett. At the funding levels presented, eight-hundred-and-forty thousand with two-hundred-and-forty thousand for the marketing fund and six-hundred for the cultural fund. That would be, that would be the motion. It's probably good to check with the clerk if they need clarification on those three suggested changes.
Okay, I just have a question. We have anybody from BCA here today? Are you okay with what we're doing? Okay, good. Everybody's fine?
Is that what?
I'm going to, I'm going to ask George Trossit if he needs to speak. George, where are you? You all right? Okay, so, any more? There's a second, there's a motion by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Felton wants to make a comment.
Can I just ask a question for, to clarify? In option two, eight-hundred-and-forty thousand for the marketing support program, so that takes the two-forty and the six-hundred and puts that all into the marketing support program?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. I just wanted clarity.
All right, so, is there any more discussion in regards to this issue and this motion? Commissioner Tobias, do you have anything else?
No, Mr. Chair.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right. The least bit of bloodletting we've had in a long time, which I'm happy about. All right, let's go to the unfinished business. I don't think we have any unfinished business. Yes, pardon me?
J3.
J3. Okay, I haven't gotten to J3 yet. Oh, yes, I have. Hello. All right, amendment to VCC, twenty-four acquisition, sale, lease, exchange, dedication and donation of real property to Upstate. Who's handling this?
I got it.
You handling it?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. And I had a meeting with staff a couple of months ago as I was leaving, things that we could clean up, some suggestions for the staff, and this was one presented and I think it was a good one. So, I want to thank Mr. Bernath from Public Works for bringing this issue to my attention, but this is under District Three. The current version of VCC twenty-four acquisition, sale, lease, exchange, dedication, donation of real property has been in place since 2013. This process creates cumbersome, requires excess staff time and delays development projects. The proposed changes state the county manager designee is authorized to accept a delivery of, approve and cause the recording of any deeds, dedication, acquisition, exchange, grants, absements and other instrument conveyed to interest in real property for any acquisition of property related to, and then there's a whole list, but the basic ones. The policy still allows for these items to come to the, before the board if there is a concern or objection by the county manager or they are outside of the scope of the items listed in the policy. All acquisitions outside of the list provided will still come to the board as an agenda item. These changes will result in the reduction of staff time and remove, removing unnecessary items from the board's meeting agenda. So, the motion to approve the proposed amendment to board policy, VCC twenty-four acquisition, sale, lease, exchange, dedication and donation of real property, that's the motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Felton, you have any questions? Commissioner Goodson? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nay, motion carries. All right, now, let's get back down to where we were. There are no cards for public comments, which is a rarity, and let's get to county reports. County manager?
No report.
County attorney?
I have no report, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Goodson?
Continue praying for Florida State.
All right, I'm going to skip over Commissioner Tobias for a second. Commissioner Felton?
No report, sir.
All right, I do have a report, just to let everybody know that I know we're coming up to budget hearings and there's going to be, I just want to give everybody a heads up. I want to have some additional discussion on a variety of different issues. One is the lifeguards and I'll have some motions at the agenda time, but I did want to let everybody know that I think there needs to be some discussion on that and there needs to be some discussion on the fire issues and the monetary things. And with that, I would like to, I'd like to make a motion to request that staff develop a report detailing the timeline and actions required to increase the fire assessment to include multiple options for potential increases. One of the only ways I can see that we're going to be able to get some of these things paid for with fire in the future is to up the assessments. It's a long process and I would like to at least start it if possible. So, that is my motion. I hope it's seconded and approved. Commissioner Pritchett?
I'm fine with them coming back with the report. We increased the fire assessment about four years ago, correct?
Yeah, we've increased it twice in the last six years, I believe, six or seven years.
I don't mind opening up that conversation. I'm not sure we'll be able to do that before budget time, have that on the board, but I don't think it's.
I'm not expecting it to be.
Okay. It's not a bad topic to discuss, but we had numerous public comment when we did that with the price analysis and everything, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And the only reason I'm doing this is because I did an exhaustive study of what the fire assessments were in surrounding areas.
Yeah.
Ours is like so low, it's ridiculous. Ours is like two-hundred dollars.
I'm fine, but it's going to be a big process with public comment.
I understand and that's why we wanted to get it started and so I would, so are you going to second it?
Yeah, I'm fine with them coming back with the report.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I don't mind designating you to reach, again, I mentioned this before, and there has been a turnover in elected officials in West Melbourne, but I think it's probably good to reach out to West Melbourne and ask what their tolerance for a fee increase is because if they're sticking to what they said before and they were willing to pull out, if we increased fees, then that does quite a bit to fire services, the number of employees we have that service that area. And I don't, I don't know how that works and maybe West Melbourne is okay with that now and it's, but they definitely, we had the mayor here, we, you know, the former mayor here, we had a former city council member here or current city council member here addressing those concerns. So, at least to give them the heads up by you reaching out on behalf of the board and finding out, maybe they can bring it up and maybe they support it again, but it is important information to have as we move forward.
I couldn't agree with you more and I'll be more than happy to do that. This is just a process to be able to get to where we're going to go and West Melbourne's going to have plenty of opportunity during the process to have the new commission address the issues. I just see it as a major issue and talking to the county manager, the county manager informed me, it's going to take almost a year to get through that process. So, it's a long process. I would, I appreciate the motion and the second. I have, it's not approved yet. Is there any more discussion on it? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you very much. And now, the most important part of the day, the vice vice chairman.
I don't know about the most, most, most important, but today is National Monte Cristo Day. The useful Florida fact of the day, the Concord Republic is a micro-nation declared as a tongue-in-cheek secession of the city of Key West, Florida from the United States on April 23rd, 1982. As part of this protest, Mayor Wardlow was proclaimed prime minister of the republic, which immediately declared war against the United States, symbolically breaking a loaf of stale Cuban bread over the head of a man dressed in a naval uniform. Quickly surrendered after one minute to the man in the uniform and applied for one billion dollars in foreign aid. I imagine a billion dollars was a lot of money back in 1982. This day in Florida history, on this day in 1574, Pedro Martinez de Aviles died twenty-five years before his death. De Aviles was sent to Florida by the Spanish Crown to drive out French colonists. He is credited with establishing St. Augustine, the first permanent settlement in the United States that ultimately claimed all of Florida as a Spanish colony. And this is a little unique here. The county employee recognition here is the library staff involved in the summer reading program. The summer reading program is the busiest time of the year at Brevard Libraries. All library staff are involved. It was all hands on deck as the staff helped patrons register for library cards and programs, put on programs and provided traditional library services. All 299 staff across the system took part in making this summer reading a hit across the county. Mary Beaumont, the youth service coordinator, played an integral role in supporting and coordinating theme, the staff and the system-wide effort. We had mascots. Every child got to select an adventure duck. These ducks were intended to travel with them on summer activities, the library, grandmothers' houses, cruises, parks, beaches and more. Every adult was eligible to get an Astro Duck created by Daniel Hearn, a library librarian one at the Port St. John's Library, who is an artist. The county staff definitely did a important service to public education by continuing the children's education during the long summer period. So, we greatly appreciate all their effort and what they did for Brevard County. And then, on a personal note, today is my mom's birthday, so she has put up with me for many, many, many years and I greatly appreciate.
Fabulous teacher also.
A wonderful teacher and a great mom, so, Mr. Chair, thank you for your time.
She does have a son who's a doctor.
She does, yes, a successful son, yes. Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, I did forget one last thing. We are still waiting on the Christie Grant approval of the Brightline Grant that we spent a lot of time and effort going to Washington on, so we're waiting for that. There's been questions by the city of Melbourne and a variety of other people on whether or not Brightline would consider other areas for stops. They have told me that Cocoa will be the last stop, period. Now, apparently Stewart has stopped, has pulled out, so that may leave a slot opened in Fort Pierce, but, you know, they've made their decision in Brevard County, the Brevard County decision's a Cocoa place, so we're moving forward with all that and as soon as I get any information in regards to where we are on it, I will let the board know immediately. All right, with that, here a motion to adjourn. There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television or the program sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.